I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roles.
Mayor Sorel?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Grasso?
Here.
Councilor Farini?
Here.
Councilor Marshon?
Here.
Councilor Penelakis?
Here.
Councilor Hines?
Here.
Councilor Reynolds?
Here.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Here.
Councilor St. Laurent?
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer. And then our new city councilor, Bill St. Laurent, who will be with us for a year. He's taken Assistant Mayor Alec Hanson's place. The Pledge of Allegiance, and then we always follow it by God Bless America.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all. God bless America.
Now, I would like to present a special award to the girls volleyball team, Class L Championship. George Hosker, who was the director of the Christmas Parade, has a presentation he'd like to make to the two captains.
Caitlin Dowd.
Caitlin Dowd and Maria Nukas. If they'd come up, right up here, so you wouldn't get you on the camera.
Good evening, Mayor, and the council. It's my pleasure to be here. Of course, these young ladies have a lot to celebrate tonight. And I must say that what I am presenting had nothing to do with the great year you had. It just shows that not only are you great athletes, but your great supporters of the community. So it is my pleasure as parade chairman to present to Kathleen Dowd and Maria Nukas, both co-captains, both most valuable players. Also, they were selected for the Allstate, and I believe that Caitlin was also volleyball Player of the Year for Class L. It is my pleasure as parade chairman to award you with the Mayor's Choice Award to the Portsmouth High School volleyball team, Class L Champions.
Girls, did you want to say a few words, too?
The dad's taking our picture.
Oh. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, sure. Um, thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the city council for inviting us here tonight, and thanks for all your support throughout all this. So, thanks.
Now, we'll get right down to the presentations. And thank you, George, very much. You did a great job on the parade this year. And they are our hometown heroes, there's no question about it. Now, we're down to the proclamations and the presentations. And of course, the first one will be the Portsmouth High School girls volleyball team, Class L Champions. And, Joanne, have you got that one?
I just...
Okay. Assistant Mayor Grasso will read it.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation. Whereas Portsmouth High School is now the home to the 2004 Class L State Championship volleyball team, and whereas this marks the first time ever that Portsmouth High has won a state championship title in volleyball, and whereas it was the perfect ending to a nineteen zero perfect season for the sixteen young women on this team, and whereas it was also the third year in a row that the PHS volleyball team, under the guidance of head coach Roy Swanson, has won its way into the final four of the Class L Championship Tournament, and whereas winning the state title will be a wonderful lifetime memory for the nine seniors, their teammates, their coaches, and all of their families and fans. Now therefore I, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do hereby join with all the members of the city council in congratulating the Portsmouth High School 2004 volleyball team on winning the Class L State Championship and proudly representing their school and community on the court and off. Given with my hand and seal, the City of Portsmouth, on the sixth day of December, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor.
Now, I'm going to ask the two captains to come up and accept the proclamation, and then our city manager will read off the names, because we do have Mayor's Awards with our T-shirts. So if you want to wait until you come up for your T-shirt, because I think you're down a little bit, why don't you come up now? Why don't the two captains come right up here now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go find the Mayor's Award in here.
Thanks.
Yeah, we'll make them up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There we go, girls. Now, don't go away. As we give you your names, you come on back up.
You want me to give them now?
No, no. And John's going to do the names and...
Y'all say, Your Honor?
I'll say.
The first honoree tonight would be Jaden Barfield. Not here? Okay. Carly Barton.
There we go, Cali.
Jaclyn Blaylock.
There we are, Jackie. Congratulations. It's got a pin. Oops. City pin there for you.
Jaclyn Burnett.
Hi there, Jackie. Congratulations. Whoops. Okay.
Brittany Cummings.
Hi there, Brittany. Hold on a minute now, I've got a shirt and a pin for you.
Lindsey Cunningham.
Right here.
Caitlin Dowd.
Congratulations again.
Whitney Dupree. Amy Minuzian. Casey Murray.
Congratulations.
Jennifer Nunes.
Congratulations. You're welcome.
Anna Nukas.
Congratulations.
Maria Nukas.
Congratulations.
Julie Priddam.
Congratulations, Julie.
Samantha Verrill.
Congratulations.
Amy Warren. And now the coaches, Your Honor?
Right.
Okay. Coach Roy Swanson.
There we are.
And the assistant coach?
Yeah.
Assistant coach Christine Riggs?
Yeah.
Is she here?
Oh, she's not here. Okay. Now, we will keep these in the city manager's office, along with the T-shirts and the pins, and maybe somebody could pick them up.
Oh, you can put them in the bag.
Or if you want, take them tonight. Is there anyone that'd like to take them tonight?
We can get them.
Yeah. Anybody, tomorrow, I got.
Want me to put them in the bag? Do I can have them all in the bag?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Great. And there we are. There we are.
I have a special gift to go to our wonderful superintendent of schools, Lionel Tracy. Could you come up, Lionel?
There we are. Oh, God, surprise. All kinds of surprises tonight.
I'm going to ask the council to stand and give the girls a big congratulation clap. Now, if you have to leave for school tomorrow, you can, or talk to the superintendent. You're welcome. Thank you, girls. Okay. Now, we're down to another proclamation. Sam's out there. Sam Jarvis, Metro Restaurant. Sam, quite wonderful, is very giving to the needy, the elderly, the people for a beautiful Thanksgiving dinner. Let's see, we've been doing it four years, Sam, and he does it up round. And the people, you know, they just can't get over it. They walk in, white tablecloth, silverware, you know, all decorated for Christmas, and they're just so obliging, they can't get over it. My Cool Jewels is not in town tonight, so I will be giving them their award on our next council meeting, the twentieth. Cool Jewels quite nicely gives brand-new sweaters from their store each year, and knits. So I will be recognizing them next year. Who's going to read that yet? Councilor Marshon's going to read it.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation. Whereas this marks the fourth straight year that Metro owner Sam Jarvis has invited the less fortunate in the Portsmouth area to enjoy an elegant and free Thanksgiving holiday dinner at his restaurant, and whereas Sam closed the Metro to paying customers on the day before Thanksgiving in order to graciously provide a wonderful and welcome full-course meal at his own expense, and whereas this year, one hundred and twenty-five people were the fortunate recipients of Sam's generous hospitality and enjoyed a marvelous feast, and whereas this kind gesture towards the less fortunate residents of our seacoast area reflects the true spirit of Thanksgiving. Now therefore I, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, join with the members of the city council in recognizing Sam Jarvis for his great kindness and generosity to the needy during the Thanksgiving holiday. Given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this sixth day of December 2004, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of Portsmouth.
Am I right up, Sam, and accept your proclamation? And I do have some gifts for you. This was the extra picture, and I want you to take it, because there'll be somebody that would like it. And this is your picture, all framed, okay? And here's a picture, small picture, for all of the helpers and everything like that. Would you like to say a few words at the podium? Okay, you got it? Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Well deserved.
First of all, Your Honor, I would like to thank you and the council for spearheading this for me, in working with the various agencies in the community, who provided us with names and individuals that came to join us and to enjoy the day as best as possible. This year, I had numerous volunteers that called who said that they would like to be a part of this event, and which I welcomed them, and of course, I was there, and Councilor Farini was there, and city manager Bohinko, and they experienced something that they shall never, ever forget. We had spoken before the event that they're going to witness something that they will always keep in their mind, that all of our guests are loving people. They showed their gratitude, and I told them, "They're going to hug you, they're going to embrace you, and you're going to have some mist in your eyes, because you will never, ever experience anything like this again." These are all guests who had a wonderful life at some point, but somehow lost the momentum, and they had to be reassured somehow that life goes on, and that they're very much a part of it. So I thank you for the years that you've helped me, and Laura, you as well, for coming here, and Farini, and so many others that have been there to witness what we try to do as best as we can. And I thank you very much for your thoughtfulness, and I shall pass the photos off to all the volunteers that were part of the day. I thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Your special guest. Now, the next one is a Human Rights Day, December tenth, two thousand and four, and I think Councilor Farini's going to read that one.
Whereas the City of Portsmouth is home to the Seacoast Group 550 of Amnesty International, and Friday, December tenth, is International Human Rights Day, and whereas Human Rights Day prompts us to remember with gratitude those who risked reputations and sometimes death as defenders of human rights, and whereas December tenth also is the anniversary of the nineteen forty-eight United Nations adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, thanks to the tireless efforts of former First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt as Chair of the UN Human Rights Commission, and whereas Amnesty International, a worldwide human rights organization with a large and dedicated membership in the United States, is welcoming the choice of the 2004 Nobel Peace Prize winner, an African woman scholar and peace activist from Kenya named Dr. Wengare Mathai, for her persistent struggle for democracy, environmental conservation, and human rights. Now, therefore I, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim Friday, December tenth, as Human Rights Day 2004. In the City of Portsmouth, an urge my fellow citizens to strive to follow the examples set by these selfless humanitarians, and work together to ensure the preservation of human rights throughout our nation and the world. Given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on the sixth day of December 2004, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of Portsmouth.
Thank you, counselor. Is the gentleman here that will accept come right up, sir? Did you want to say a few words at the mic? You certainly may. Okay, you're welcome.
My name is Peter Samsic. I'm the local coordinator and chapter secretary for the Seacoast Chapter of Amnesty International. And on behalf of my chapter, I'd like to express our appreciation to the mayor and the city councilors. This is the third year that such a proclamation has been issued, and we certainly appreciate it. We believe it is important, at least once a year, to be reminded of human rights. And for over thirty years, I personally have been associated with Amnesty International's campaign to defend human rights and civil rights throughout the world. Since I was born in a East European country with a communist government, I know what it is not to have such rights, and so I think that probably motivated me to do what I did. As an American, however, I began to think that some of these rights can be taken for granted. Amnesty International always has a motto that we've lived by, that we claim that the loss of human rights anywhere in the world is just the precursor, the first sign of possible loss of human rights in other countries as well. And so it makes us connected with the rest of the world. I didn't think that this phrase would apply much to the United States of America until for the past two years, where we have serious concerns on a number of issues, for example, the U.S. Patriot Act, and our government's change in policy towards human rights, the detention of prisoners, and torture. So I think it's only appropriate that we refocus and remember this day and the importance of human rights in our world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, very much. Now, we're down... Now, we're down to the Mayor's Award, and we have a man here that needs a lot of bows, and that is Russell Van Villier. And he, it is, this award, the Mayor's Award, is in sincere appreciation for all of the many years that you have given, your time volunteering as a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Community Development. And I think, Russ, if I'm right, it's twenty or more years.
Thirty.
Oh, my heavens. Come right up, Russ, please.
Why don't you say a few words, huh? Okay? Thank you, dear. Oh, yeah, love you.
Interesting thing, when I first came to Portsmouth, from Connecticut a few years before, John, one of the first people I met was Sam Jarvis, who stood behind the counter at Jarvis's Restaurant, and would get breakfast there before heading over to the Navy Yard. But in the mid-seventies, I think Bruce Graves was mayor, I, along with a few other people who are still on the Citizens Committee, became a committee member, and I can remember the first year, two things that come to mind that we did, a lot of things come to mind, but two that come to mind are the Market Square improvements. Probably not many of you can remember what it looked like before we improved it, but the improvement was massive. And also, the industrial park down on Heritage Avenue. You might not think we needed an industrial park, but in those days, we did badly. All the industry and businesses you see around here now didn't exist, for the most part, in those days. Some of the other interesting things are the neighborhood improvement projects. We started in, I think, in the late seventies, McDonough Street area, Cabot Street, and had worked our way up to Atlantic Heights, where things have been happening for quite a few years now. And it's so gratifying to see the neighborhoods and the people respond. I think that first year when we started, you know, the government is here to help you, everybody wasn't necessarily that thrilled in McDonough Street, but it did work out. And one other thing is we give a number of social service agency grants, and it's quite an education and a learning experience about the low income and the needs of many of our citizens of Portsmouth. Quite a learning experience. We may all look around and see the million-dollar houses going up and tuckers' toes and things, but that's just the tip of the iceberg. I thank you very much for this honor, Mayor. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much, Russ, you're a wonderful person. Now, we're down to the acceptance of the minutes, November twenty-second, two thousand and four. No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down to the public comment session, and we have three speakers tonight. The first one is Stephen Clark, 351 Union Street, and his topic is City Year, yeah, City Year, Martin Luther King Day.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and distinguished members of the council. My name is Stephen Clark, and I stand before you this evening as a Portsmouth resident and the Development and Communications Manager for City Year, New Hampshire. At tonight's meeting, you will be discussing a proposal in which I have, I and Pon Nitishen have asked for your permission for and support to hold the Fourth Annual Martin Luther King Day March of Justice on Monday, January seventeenth, two thousand and five, in downtown Portsmouth. Through your support last year, we were honored to hold City Year, New Hampshire's March of Justice in Portsmouth with Congressman Bradley as our guest speaker, which was a great success. I'm here again today to ask for your continued support and permission to hold the Fourth Annual March of Justice. The plan is to have a group of approximately three hundred community members march from the Portsmouth Middle School through downtown, finishing the march back at the Portsmouth Middle School. We would like to use the same route for the marches of last year, which was the result of working with the city and the Portsmouth Police Department. The proposed schedule for our day is to start at eleven a.m. with a rally and kickoff at Portsmouth Middle School. At eleven-thirty to twelve-fifteen p.m., march from Portsmouth Middle School through City, through Portsmouth City, returning to Portsmouth Middle School. Twelve-fifteen, a free lunch for all community members. One to four, community service projects for all ages. So far, we have community support from organizations including the Seacoast Martin Luther King Coalition, the Portsmouth Middle School, and Volunteer Action Center of the United Way of the Greater Seacoast. As we begin to collaborate more deeply with organizations around honoring and celebrating the Martin Luther King Junior Day, we are excited to continue work with the City of Portsmouth as a key partner in this event. On behalf of City Year, New Hampshire, we respectfully ask that you grant us permission to host this special event in Portsmouth this January seventeenth. We also hope you would consider joining us as honored guests at the March of Justice this year. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Stephen. The next speaker is Kent LaPage, who lives at forty-five Melbourne Street. He is the chairperson of the school board, and he's going to speak to Channel Twenty-Two.
Madam Mayor, city council members, I come before you tonight, first of all, to thank you for recognizing our students when they do an outstanding job. I appreciate that. That's, shows real community. Showing real community, I just want to also take this time to thank Alan Brady and his staff, and also city manager John Bohinko. This past fall, we televised one boy's soccer game, one girl's soccer game, two girls' regular season volleyball games, and the championship. We also did a total of five... We also did a total of five home football games. We've grown over the last year doing this by taking the funds from the gate receipts, and for these telecasts, it's costing less than two hundred dollars, and they are rebroadcast continuously. This is a great effort, one that I hope that you keep in mind and support. In fact, that the first winter sport game will be aired, it will be the December fourteenth Girls' Basketball Game against Concord, that will then be rebroadcast on that coming Saturday night, which is Saturday, the eighteenth, at seven p.m. This is an excellent opportunity for people to recognize what's going on in our school systems. Not only has Channel twenty-two done the sports events, but they've also recently done graduations that have been greatly appreciated. And this year, we'll be doing the All-City Concert on Christmas. It will be telecast on Christmas Day at, in the evening on the twenty-fifth of December. I want to take this opportunity to thank Alan Brady and his staff, and also Guy Hampson, who has done an outstanding job of broadcasting these games at total gratis. We are very fortunate to have the individuals to do this. I hope we can keep continuing this type of broadcasting, because it's not only important for our school system, it's also important for those that cannot get out and enjoy. When you take into consideration an average broadcast for sporting events, for one minute of play on the national television, it's worth one point seven million dollars of advertising, and we do this for under two hundred dollars, we have quite the bargain, because these games, as you just honored, the girls' volleyball game, had a total of six airings of this outstanding volleyball game match that was against Nashua North. I again thank you as the council for permitting this, and I hope to see more of this grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kent. The last speaker is Ray Will, one twenty-five Pribble Way, and he's going to speak regarding the Salvation Army Kettle Campaign.
Good evening. It's that time of year again, Christmas. It's getting colder, the lights are on the trees, people are a little nicer, and the Salvation Army Kettle Ringers are out in force in many locations throughout the Seacoast. Need knows no season, so the Salvation Army is looking for volunteers far and wide to staff kettle locations. Many individuals have already come forward to respond to the Army's call. But the Salvation Army is also asking Seacoast businesses, churches, and social organizations to volunteer teams of people per group to staff location per day, or however many days or locations the group would like to take. This way, instead of one or two people filling, say, a six-hour shift, you could fill days of bell ringing with each individual volunteer only having to ring for two hours. If your business or social group is interested in helping out, please call the Salvation Army Portsmouth Corps at four-three-six-two-six-zero-six, Monday through Thursday, nine to four, and volunteer location or time, antime. Captain Scott and Leslie Flanders say that anyone at the Corps should be able to assist you, as they have the master schedule on a corridor wall outside their offices. Please feel free to bring a visibility sign to identify yourself, your church, your business, on the day your group staffs a kettle. You know, something that says, this neighborhood association, this church, this social organization supports the Salvation Army Kettle Campaign. With this in mind, the Salvation Army would also like to thank those city volunteers, both City of Portsmouth employees and numerous city boards and commissions, that have already stepped up and volunteered to staff kettles. The Salvation Army Kettle Campaign is a great opportunity for businesses, social groups, and churches to, to do good and be a visible presence this holiday season. Please join the hundreds in your community who have already generously donated their time. Together, we can make a difference in the needs of needy Seacoast families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Now we're down to the public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight. It's the Ordinance Amending Chapter Nine, Miscellaneous Public Welfare by the Addition of an Article Eight entitled "Aggressive or Menacing Panhandling Prohibitive." Would you like to speak to this, Bob, or John? Bob, maybe?
Briefly, Your Honor, this, this is an ordinance that was brought forward by the City Council because of some incidents that were observed in the city earlier this year, in which individuals were believed to be begging in a way that some members of the community found to be offensive. And for that reason, what the ordinance does is it primarily prohibits what are perceived to be aggressive or menacing kinds of panhandling or begging. And it does it by defining the things that make the begging or panhandling seem menacing or aggressive, or aggressive, such as the demeanor of the people borrowing the money, the location of where they try to, not borrow money, begging for money, the location where people try to do the begging for money prohibits things such as panhandling next to an ATM machine and items of that type. The City Council has established that there would be a one hundred dollar fine for violation of this ordinance.
Thank you, Bob. We will open this up for speakers. Do I have any first-time speakers, far, against, or simply two? Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time before I close this public hearing, do I have any speakers? Close. We're down to the approval of grants and donations, acceptance of donations to the Cemetery Committee. What's your wish, Counselor?
Your Honor, I move that we accept the donations of the Cemetery, Cemetery Committee, to the Cemetery Committee, and if you'd like, I'll leave these amounts.
Yeah, that would be nice. Let's get a second on that. Okay.
Twenty-five dollars from A. and M. McGee, twenty-five dollars from Joyce Volk, fifty dollars from Mark and Lenora Leonati, fifty dollars from Ronald Bojo, seventy-five dollars from John and Sarah Churchill, two hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty cents from Flatbread Portsmouth Incorporated, four hundred dollars from Saint Andrews Lodge, number fifty-six, five hundred dollars from Northeast Auctions by Ronald Bojo LLC.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The next one is the acceptance of DOT and the HUD grant for the Riverwalk Project. Counselor Farini?
I would recommend that the City Council vote to accept and expend the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Grant in the amount of nine hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred thirty dollars for the purpose of constructing the Piscataqua Riverwalk along a portion of Bow Street. Further, I would recommend that the City Council vote to accept and expend a five-hundred-thousand-dollar Transportation Enhancement Fund Grant from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation for the purpose of constructing the Piscataqua Riverwalk along a portion of Bow Street.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Your Honor, please, Your Honor.
Yes, this question?
Yes. May I address this question to our City Manager?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Bohinko, over the years, we've received grants and, and funding in a way of different avenues, but, and we've had a, a, a session on bringing the public up to date on the process of the Riverwalk and the amount of money that we have collected, but I don't think we've ever had a public hearing. Now, not everybody approves of the Riverwalk. It started off with over a thousand feet along the river. I think it was from the Memorial Bridge all the way down to Ferry Landing, just this side of the Ferry Landing. Now it's down to four hundred feet, which is a very short distance, and I'm asking you, Mr. Bohinko, do you plan on having a public hearing? Because I'm hearing on the street that not everybody is approving of this project. I mean, there's two projects that are underway that I have a, a little bit of heart run about, and everybody knows it's the library and the Riverwalk. Here again, we will be taking from what I can see along the river, remnants of things that date back to the thirties and forties, and that once that Riverwalk is put in, there goes the old pilings, there goes the riffraff that was along the waterfront that I remember as a child growing up. So I'm asking the City Manager, do we plan on having a, a public hearing on this Riverwalk issue?
Well, Your Honor, if I might, first let me answer that it wouldn't be my public hearing, Council of White House, it would be the City Council's public hearing, and certainly the City Council at any time wants to hold a public hearing on this matter, I would encourage them to do so. What this allows us to do is, allows us to start the process. It, it basically gets us to start doing some surveys out at the location. This is a, is a project that's been identified in the city's master plan and has been talked about probably as long ago as the early seventies, and probably has been more active in the nineties, when there was a conscious decision by not only this City Council, but by planning boards in the past, to proceed with the Riverwalk. One of the things that is imperative in proceeding with the Riverwalk is that we have a universal approval from the property owners, which we're undertaking right now. We believe, as the city staff, and I believe the City Council does as well, that this should be a win-win situation, not only for the city, but also for the property owners. So we're in the process of doing that and working with the legal department, as well as the assistant, the deputy city manager, while putting together those meetings and receiving letters of commitment to proceed with some of the survey work. Tonight's vote basically allows us to accept these funds and to proceed with doing some of the survey work that needs to be done out there and the preliminary work. There will be public meetings on this. I believe there have been public meetings on this in the past. Cindy Hayden is here, the deputy city manager, and if I might, Your Honor, she's been involved with this prior to my arrival in Portsmouth, and she has been working on it, and I think she could summarize some of the past history on this better than I.
Very good. Come on now, I'm down. Cindy.
Good evening. Yet, for those of you who were involved in the process previously, in the mid nineteen-nineties, there was extensive public hearings, public meetings on the Riverwalk Project. At that time, as of nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, we prepared preliminary engineering design plans for a Riverwalk that would go from basically where the tugboats are, the city-owned property, all the way down to meet up with the Harbor Place deck. In recent years, or in the last year, we have come to focus just on the first four-hundred-foot segment that goes from the, the city-owned Series Street parcel down to basically Chapel Street, if you were standing up on Chapel Street looking towards the water. That first four-hundred-foot section is approximately what the grant funds that we have in hand right now would fund. The original Riverwalk and its eight-hundred-foot length was about a two-point-six-million-dollar project, and that's nineteen ninety-seven dollars. This project, as it moved, presuming it moves forward, will have public hearings that will go to the Planning Board and HDC, maybe some other boards as well. Also, the wetlands, state wetlands permitting process is really key as well, so that'll be an important point. We are having apple-door engineering do some preliminary work down there so that they can update what the existing conditions are on the waterfront, since that has changed over the last six years, so that we have a, a starting point to sit down with property owners and work one-on-one with each property owner down there to come up with a conceptual plan that, as the City Manager said, is a win-win for the city and for the property owners down there.
Thank you, Cindy.
I, I just hope, Your Honor, that somewheres along the line, prior to hearings before the land regulatory boards, that this council will see fit to hold a public hearing, more than just a public informational session, but a public hearing where we can hear from people who are, are saying to me, is it necessary to attract the tourists, the historians, the people to the waterfront? They know where it is. You create a Riverwalk in a community or town or a city when you want to attract them to your waterfront, and I don't think we have to do that. And that's what they're saying to me, and that's why I, I'm asking somewheres along the line that we have a public hearing on this.
Counselor St. Laurent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think Council of White House has a good point on that, that we start, we're going to do a public hearing with the City Council. I think we should do it before we start into all the other boards. My question, probably to the City Manager, Your Honor, is the, the matching grants, what, what will the city have to contribute to matching grants on this?
Your Honor, if I might, there are no matching grants. This is all, this, this, there is no matching requirement on these monies.
So the city will have...
No local dollars involved.
Local dollars involved.
Correct.
Thank you.
That, I, my understanding, Cindy? So that one point five million dollars is all grants that have been sought by us over the years, since this whole inception, and it will have no local dollars involved in it, so we, we get one point five million dollars.
Senator Gray has been very involved with us on this, with money. Any other discussion? Counselor Farini?
I'd just point out for the record, if we ever do have a public hearing, that certainly plenty of people have contacted me in favor of the Riverwalk, so it would be nice for them to have an opportunity perhaps also.
Very good. Any other? Ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down to, let's see, First Reading of Ordinance Amending, Chapter Ten, Article Twelve, Section Ten, dash twelve oh two, Off-Street Parking Innovation Intermodal Transportation Credit for Central Business A and Central Business B Districts Impact Fees. Counselor Hines, would you like to do that one?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The Off-Street Parking Innovation, the Intermodal Transportation Credit for Central Business A and Central Business D Districts will be effective on the date of adoption of this ordinance. The Unmet Parking Need Credit is established at twelve hundred dollars per parking space. Thereafter, annually, on the anniversary of that date, the fee shall be adjusted by the annual change in the CPI, the Cost-Price Index, for the Boston, Brockton, Nashua, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maine, and Connecticut. All items indexed as computed by the Bureau of Labor, the statistics of the U.S. Department of Labor for the most recent twelve months period preceding the adjustment
John, are you going to make the recommendation?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I would recommend that the City Council move to pass First Reading of the ordinance as submitted and hold a public hearing and Second Reading at the December twentieth, two thousand and four City Council Meeting.
Thank you.
Action on this item will take place under Section Nine of the agenda.
Second.
I, I receive the second discussion. Yes, Counselor Marshon?
Thank you, Mayor. I've gotten a fair amount of feedback in the last week or so from members of the business community, and one of the, you can imagine that one of the common feedback you get back initially is, nobody ever wants to pay more for something, even though it's, I think in this case, very much justified. And so one thing in, in having conversation that I wanted to throw out there for discussion is, one of the concerns that some members of the business community have is that with the additional cost per space, that for an independent business that is looking to get started that may not have the amount of capital to get going that, say, a chain or a larger establishment might have, that there would be, it could be very problematic for that small independent, say, especially a restaurant, that would have to pay quite a bit of money to get going. And so one suggestion that came up that seemed like a reasonable balance for the additional money that will have to be paid, might be to find a way to delay prior to opening, but perhaps later than the current, which I believe is the, I believe right now they have to, to pay before they get their, their permit, construction permit? Is that correct?
Bob?
That's correct, John.
Bob?
A suggestion, and I've never opened a restaurant, so I don't proclaim to be an expert in this. But if there would be a way to do it later in the process, but before it would be open, to guarantee the money would be there, say, before the Certificate of Operation, if I've got the term right, which if I understand correctly, is later in the process, but obviously before you can open the doors. That should be designed mainly for the small business, the small restaurant in particular, that's going to have trouble maybe getting that, that capital together when there are many costs involved with trying to open a restaurant. But obviously, we want to make sure that money gets in the door before they open, because... because I think we all agree that this is a proper amount of money per space, and that it's something that's necessary because of the additional burden, parking burden, that is brought upon the city. That's just something I wanted to throw out there, perhaps for discussion, I know we're only at the first reading, but something I wanted to throw out there that I thought was, uh, uh, worth, uh, worthwhile thought.
Any other discussion? Uh, Ned, and then John. Oh, and then Laura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this proposal seems, uh, as we've heard, uh, before and read a report before on it, very well, uh, researched, and, uh, the recommended increase, um, does appear justified. I just wanted to, um, express appreciation for, um, uh, having been taken into account my, um, previous, uh, request or suggestion that, um, which is now reflected, uh, I believe in the, uh, terminology, um, for the parking impact fee, that it, that the monies be allowed to be used, uh, not, uh, solely for construction of a parking facility, but for potentially other, um, other remedies which would, uh, either increase the parking supply, or, as is noted in our- in our notes here, uh, decrease the demand for parking. So, I, um, appreciate the modification.
Thank you, Ned. Uh, Councilor Heinz?
Thank you, your honor. I've had a request that we study the issue of expanding an existing business, um, and in this case, I think there are, uh, is at least one business in the city that intends to expand and currently has parking for their, uh, business. Uh, the expansion would probably create, uh, two potential parking areas for this one business, so, uh, I don't know that the question ever has been addressed in that sense. Uh, if it has not, then I would move that we table this issue until that issue is studied to see whether or not we're putting a extra burden on any business in the city that intends to expand in that area.
John, would you like to speak to that?
I'm trying to understand what the, uh, maybe if the, uh, Councilor Heinz could be a little more specific on what unmet parking need would have to do with an expansion of a business that has some parking already available. I- I'm, I guess I don't quite understand what the question is or the concern is.
Well, I have not investigated the, uh, issue of how much parking is currently available for the business, but I believe that there is a business that is moving in the general area to a larger location, and that, uh, this would put a- an additional burden on them by quite a bit to meet the twelve-hundred dollars per unit of space required for the expanded business. So, I am not sure that, uh, the total burden would be excessive, however, uh, the business person, uh, would like that addressed to see that it is not excessive.
Your honor, if I might, it's probably best to let this go to public hearing and hear from those people when they come in, and then we can have staff available to make a presentation and have the EDC members that, uh, worked on this, uh, be available. I- I would like to just speak to this, that this committee, uh, from the Economic Development Commission, the, uh, subcommittee, uh, has countless hours that they've put into this issue, uh, exploring various scenarios, and one of the, I mean, it's one of the hardest working committees that I've- I've wor- I've dealt with, um, they hit every angle, and they also brought in a focus group from some developers downtown as well. So, my only response to that would be, let's hear from the public, I guess, and- and have our EDC members here and- and see where it goes.
Thank you, your honor. I would like to, uh, respond to that and say that I would withdraw my motion to table and allow these people to appear at the public hearing.
Thank you, John. Uh, Laura, and then Steve.
Yes, um, all these, um, extra funds that come in are going into a separate fund for a parking facility?
Uh, correct. The- the funds have to be set aside and cannot be commingled, so they- they're used not, they're used to, uh, help ease the parking situation downtown. Some of the funds have been used, uh, for, um, for example, uh, the expansion at the high-handover parking garage, some of the utility bearing of the utilities, uh, some of the money has been used for satellite lots to pay the leases on those, so the idea is to spend the money to help alleviate some of the parking problems. And getting back to what the EDC did, is they wanted to have this tied back to a number, uh, and the number that they chose was one-year repayment, bond repayment on just one space of covered parking, and we used a number of sixteen thousand dollars per space, we amortized it over twenty years, and we included an interest rate assumption, and it came out to about twelve hundred dollars. And we- and the EDC subcommittee used a focus group of, uh, developers and other business people and said, this is how we arrived at it, this, our intent is to utilize these funds, uh, to help lessen the parking problem in the Central Business District, and by and large, uh, they had a positive, uh, feedback. Uh, this number has not been changed since nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, this committee went out and spent time looking at other communities, not only in the northeast, but other places, so a lot of time and effort, a lot of thought was given to this, uh, and the- the feedback that we've received has been, of course, nobody likes to pay more, but has been, yes, you've thought this out, uh, and we believe that, uh, using your methodology is- is- is fair and equitable. So, I guess we'll see with the public hearing.
Thank you. Uh, Steve?
Thanks, mayor. Uh, again, I want to reiterate, uh, that the feedback I got had li- little to do with any dispute with the dollar amount for exactly the reason that John just gave. It's a very transparent, logical number, and I think that's a fantastic piece of the process. One thing, I don't know if it's something that can be answered right now, again, it's not my expertise, I didn't have a lot of time to try to find this out on my own, uh, and something that I'm willing to find out for the public hearing, is if, uh, there was interest in trying to, uh, delay the payment of that money till a little later in the process to free up that capital a little bit longer and encourage small businesses to have a shot at getting downtown independent businesses, how much time would we be talking in a typical situation would even be saved? I don't proclaim to know the answer, but I'm not sure if- if, uh, if John or- or somebody here would know the, roughly, the amount of time that would typically be saved in a situation like that.
Uh, Bob? John?
Well, I- maybe I'll take a stab at it, but, uh, the- the idea is when they- they get the, um, uh, the permit to start their construction as to when they get their, uh, uh, certificate of occupancy?
Yeah.
Uh, it all depends on the, uh, the project, it all depends on what they're doing. I mean, one thing we have to remember here is that many of these restaurants or other thing, other- other, um, businesses that are gonna open up already have achieved their unmet parking, so there might be reuses here. They never have to pay again. Once they've paid once, once that- that property is paid once, they don't have to pay again unless they have, for example, a more intensive use that requires more parking spaces that ever has been used there. So, I think it's all gonna be on a case-by-case basis. Um, you could have a project that, you know, the permit comes out, it might be thirty days, could be a hundred and twenty days, it could be, it could be a whole range.
Depends on the scope of the project, I guess, is the...
I do have to say, if I could, your honor, for the council's benefit, that, uh, discussions along the lines suggested by Councilor Marshon have come up in the past, and one issue which the council really has to seriously consider is the collectability of the funds. Um, the current system under which this money has to be paid before anybody gets a building permit has demonstrated complete collectability. Uh, however, if the building were standing and the money wasn't paid, um, then the possibility that that money might not get paid is, uh, significantly increased. Um, so we, uh, there are policy considerations for the council to take under advisement.
And again, we can bring case-by-case, uh, situations, uh, for review, I mean, uh, it- it depends on the scope of the project, the, I mean, it goes from the smallest to the largest, and, uh, in many instances, there are a lot of projects that come in and find that they have already achieved their, uh, requirements.
Uh, are we ready for the vote? Uh, Harold?
Just one more, your honor, yes. You know, I watched this through the EDC, they did do their homework, they did, uh, come in with some suggestions, and they revised the suggestions and, uh, ideas, so it- it was a tremendous amount of work put into it, uh, but I have feelings, as, uh, Councilor Heinz does, I- I'm willing to wait till after the public hearing, because I- I wanna cater to the existing businesses who want to expand a little bit, and what criteria and what hardship they would have to go through in order to meet the requirements of this new ordinance. So, I'm very willing to wait for the public hearing.
Uh, would you like the motion, uh, reread by the city clerk before we proceed for the vote? Or is everybody happy, you know what you're voting for? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now, we're down to the second reading of ordinance amending chapter nine, miscellaneous public welfare, by the addition of article eight, entitled, "Aggressive or menacing panhandling prohibited." I'm going to ask, um, Councilor Pandalakis, seeing this was her, uh, thing in the beginning, to pass it to her.
Madam Mayor, I would like to table this issue, uh, until after the first of the year, so that we could have a work session, so people could better understand what this ordinance is supposed to do.
Second.
Good, second, who seconded it? Very good. Discussion? Uh, yes, Tom.
I- I would, I thank Councilor Pandalakis, I- I, uh, for doing that. I think the objective of the ordinance is a good one, and she certainly exercises some prudence in- in tabling it so that we can have an opportunity to dig in a little deeper and perhaps have a policy discussion, and, uh, again, the objective is a good one, it's just a question of whether we meet it in an equitable and appropriate manner, and I'm sure we can take a good, hard look at it.
Very good. We are ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Third and final reading of, uh, ordinance amending chapter seven, article three, section seven, period three-three-zero, no parking, Islington Street, Route One bypass. I'm going to ask our new councilor, uh, Bill St. Laurent, uh, to carry the ball on that one.
Thank you, your honor. I would recommend that the city council move to pass third and final reading of the amended ordinance, uh, submitted, uh...
That's it?
Period, yeah.
Second?
Very good.
Uh, your- your honor, I- I'm sorry, I came into this late, so I- I'm not sure exactly how, what this does, but it- it looks to me like we're saying no parking between, uh, I'm sorry, uh, to the Route One bypass all the way up Islington Street.
Uh, Bill, uh, Bob will explain it to you.
Just a little bit, please.
Uh, you, uh, Councilor St. Laurent, um, all this ordinance actually does is correct some naming, um, anomalies in the ordinance. Uh, for example, there was a time when what is now the bypass was the interstate highway in, uh, before the construction of Route ninety-five. So, when the ordinance refers to the interstate highway, it really meant the bypass.
Right.
As time went on, and so we corrected. And the other one is, there's a reference in there to the West End Cafe as being a limitation, uh, on a no parking area, and the West End Cafe is gone, and we in fact, uh, could not locate it with any precision.
I do remember it.
And in trying to find the West End Cafe, we did come to realize that that particular provision of the ordinance was totally redundant of another section, so we're simply deleting it.
I- I guess 'cause I see parking at different places along there, and then it says on here, something about, uh, uh, prohibited, uh, two-hour parking in some places, when it says no parking, so I'm just, I guess I was...
The important point is, the ordinance doesn't actually change what's allowed or not allowed at all, it only corrects some wording errors.
Okay. It isn't cleaning up the whole, it isn't...
No, it isn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion before we bring it to a vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now, we are down to, wait a minute, presentations and considerations of written communications and petitions. I don't feel that we need to read the letter, councilors, uh, because our, uh, speaker has already spoke to it. I, it's a letter from Pawn, I always kill her name, Nick John, let's see, what is that called? Uh, City Year, New Hampshire, requesting permission to hold the third annual Martha Luther King Day March of Justice on Monday, January seventeenth, two thousand and five.
Your honor, move to the city manager with power.
Very good. Second discussion. All, uh, Harold?
Your honor, in- in reference to another issue of Martin Luther King, uh, do you know where the breakfast will be held this year, on the seventeenth?
I don't know.
Usually, you're held on his birthday.
Yeah, but it's always down at Yolken's.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Uh, we all ready for...
Said we are.
We all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now, we're down to the city manager, and John has five items that require action.
Uh, thank you, your honor. With regards, uh, to the, uh, first item, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask that Chris Dwyer come forward, uh, if it's okay with the city council. Chris is the Chair of Art Speak, and I think she would be the best person to, uh, give you a summary of what, uh, the Art Speak, uh, commission wants to do.
Hi, Chris. Doing a good job.
Thank you. Uh, you have a, uh, fairly extensive description of what we're asking approval for, so I'll give a brief summary and then take questions. The, um, it's fair to say that probably Portsmouth will have the most extensive master plan coverage of cultural issues of any master plan that we are aware of or can think about, and that's, uh, garnered a fair amount of attention from other communities. So, the cultural community applied right at the beginning, when we just started Art Speak, for some grant funds to be able, when the master plan was finished, to be able to do some public celebrations associated with the master plan, highlighting different aspects of the citizen input and the cultural aspects. We have about seven thousand dollars that we can use for that purpose from grant funds. So, the idea is to hold a public art, uh, competition essentially, for temporary public art installations in various parts of the city. That will be, uh, essentially two weeks' worth of temporary installations commissioned by local artists that each will highlight some aspect of the master plan. So, we see it as an opportunity to, uh, bring public interest to various parts of the master plan. There are site-specific locations, so the location will matter, there will be a connection between the location and some aspect of the master plan. It might be, um, transportation, it might be the signage aspects, the present for art, affordable housing, there are a lot of different, uh, parts of the master plan to choose from. We've selected, as your memo indicates, some public sites, and there'll also be some private, um, sites. We're asking for both the, uh, approval to launch the activity and the approval for the public sites, so...
Thank you, Chris, very much. Is there any questions, Chris, while she's up at the podium? Uh, she looks like, uh, she's done something to herself with the crash.
I'm one of the people who was hit by a car.
Oh, great.
Not- not in Portsmouth, though, as Sam Jarvis said.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you take care. Are there any questions?
Your honor, I...
Move that the city council, uh, approve the overnight art project and authorize the city manager to oversee its competition, installation, and removal processes?
Very good. Great. You're all set. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just one question, your honor. Uh, in the case of, if one of these pieces is just destroyed or somebody maliciously, I mean, are we liable, is the city liable for, how does that, I- I know this, it's the city manager with power, but...
Your honor, your honor, the plan is gonna be to draft up, uh, an agreement with all participating artists that would address that as well as, uh, a number of other issues.
So, we won't, we won't be held liable?
Yes.
If somebody, you know, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Thank you, Chris.
Could I do one more thing, and that's to introduce, um, Beth Shepherd-Rabidem, maybe you would stand up. Uh, Art Speak also received grant funds to hire a, our first, uh, part-time staff consultant to actually help carry out some of the things of the volunteer board. Beth's... Beth started last month. I know you all received information about her a little bit ago, and so she located here in City Hall, and we're really happy to have her. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item deals with Newcastle Avenue Public Access and interpretive signs. In January of 2003, you approved an application and acceptance of an expenditure of federal funds of up to $50,000 to be distributed by the New Hampshire Coastal Program for Newcastle Avenue Reconstruction Project. Basically, this was to help do some bump outs and some interpretive signs. The project was delayed because we've been in the process of working with DOT on funding, on the utilities, and because the contract would expire, we are asking that the City Council, again, approve the acceptance of the DES funds and approve of entering into a contract with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and the City Council authorize me to execute any documents which may be necessary for this contract, which approval expires on December 31st, 2005.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion? Being no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item deals with a request for approval to, to put out the bid surplus vehicles. The Charter, excuse me, the City Ordinance, Section 1.505, requires that property in value of excess of $500 or more must receive approval from the City Council prior to bidding. There are approximately nine vehicles that we're looking to put out the bid. Highest bid will receive, but I need authorization from the City Council to do this.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Bill?
Yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. Question to the City Manager. If, in fact, one or two of these vehicles are not sold, John, for whatever reason, there are charities that accept cars, would you, would, could we do something like this and...
Any disposal of that sort, Counselor, I would come back to the City Council.
Do it. Okay. But I mean, that would be a possibility if, for some reason, we didn't get a bid on one of the cars.
The Council can do, I mean, what I would do is if, let's say, seven of these nine cars sold, if two didn't sell, I'd come back and allow you to tell me how to dispose of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Harold?
Yes. Uh, Your Honor, in mentioning these nine vehicles, there's also mentioning a mobile home.
Where?
Where?
Well, it's on page 24. Is that in the...
That's the ordinance, Counselor.
Okay. All right. I just wondered. It didn't, it didn't state.
Okay.
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Next item deals with report back regarding an acceptance of Moffett Street. Attaches a memorandum from the City's Planning Director, David Holden, regarding report back from the Planning Board to the City Council on a request by Attorney Pelech on behalf of the client, John Bozett, accept Moffett Street as a city street. And basically, the Planning Board is recommending the acceptance of Moffett Street as a city street with a condition that the Department of Public Works, the payments for all inspection services which have been conducted on behalf of the city have been completed.
Somebody want to make that motion? Harold?
Yeah. I move to accept the Planning Board's recommendation for the accept of Moffett Street as a city street with the conditions as listed.
Second. Uh, discussion? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item deals with a report back from the Planning Board regarding a Portsmouth Little League request of advertising on the back of the scoreboard at Plains Field. Again, there's a memorandum from the City Planning Director, David Holden, regarding report back from the Planning Board to the City Council on this request, allowing for signed advertising of a local radio station on the back of the scoreboard at Plains. What the Planning Board did was they felt that there should be a one-year trial period for the proposal, and that it be for a, for the season, May 1st to September 1st, and that the size of signs stay no larger than the back of the scoreboard.
Move to honor the recommendation of the Planning Board.
Second.
Very good. I'd like to talk on that.
Your Honor?
Uh, I contacted the neighborhood down there because I did have concerns. I remembered when part of the neighborhood on Niddle did complain, but no one down there seems to oppose it. So, I definitely will vote for it tonight.
Counselor St. Laurent?
Uh, yes, thank you, Your Honor. Is, is there a, how is that, a benefit to the city for letting them post?
No. What this does, if I might, Your Honor, traditionally, Little League has pretty much funded the, the construction and maintenance of the fields. So, the city does mow the lawn, but the, the city really does not put any monies into Little League other than the mowing of the lawn. They, they provide funds for their participants through these types of fundraisers. What they've tried over the years to do is get away from the tagging to raise money this way so that the kids don't have to be out with the buckets, and it seems to have been successful for them. The one thing the Planning Board did in this particular case is made sure it was a one-year pilot program so that if in the event there are people that are concerned with this, that we just won't renew their approval for next year. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Your Honor, that's all I have for action items. If there are any questions of me, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Any questions? Harold?
Yes. At the last City Council meeting, the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers requested some cost factors in reference to the library, and they submitted a, a well-prepared memo, and they have asked me, is this, you know, these figures being put together now to be presented back to the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers? So, I asked the City Manager...
I'm in the process of putting together a report that I'll provide to the City Council, and of course, that will be public information, which can be provided to the Portsmouth Taxpayers Association.
Thank you. Because at that meeting, there was a very good turnout. We discussed this at some quite length, and these questions are very important to them.
And that's fine. And as I indicated, the report will be to the City Council as to the funding levels. We're waiting for some numbers to come in relative to some of parts of the project, and we will provide you with that, we will provide the City Council with that estimate, and certainly the Portsmouth Taxpayers Association and anybody else can look at the information. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, we're down to the mayor now, and the mayor has nothing to report. Now, we're down to Counselor Heinz, Blue Ribbon African Burial Ground Committee report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll give you a brief report, just highlighting the number of meetings that we've held. We started on October 7th, 2003, to address the issue of discovering some unmarked graves on Chestnut Street as it abuts court. Having found this issue, we then reported to the state and began the process of doing justice to something that happened perhaps 200 years or more ago. And after this point, we have held meetings on October 6th, October 27th, December 1st. The issues that were raised at these meetings spoke to the possibility of making Chestnut Street one-way and creating green space, making Chestnut Street a dead end and creating green space, making Chestnut Street a dead end and creating green space in a memorial at State Street or Chestnut Street. All of these issues have been floated. The general consensus is that I don't think dead ending would serve the city's purpose or the purpose of making a proper memorial in this instance. However, the committee is still open on the issue, and we'll be holding another meeting in January. That basically is what has been determined by the committee members, who are Mary Bailey, Valerie Cunningham, Vernis Jackson, Laura Pandalakis, Counselor James Spleen, John P. McGee Jr., Esquire, Steve Parkinson of Public Works, Susan Woodland, the Assistant to City Attorney, John, City Attorney, and then John Burke, the Division of, Director of Parking and Transportation. All of these people attend all of the meetings upcoming, and we will continue to prioritize whatever in the minutes of these meetings as they occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Heinz. We're down to, are there, is there any miscellaneous or unfinished business? I don't see Harold, but I do see Ned.
Your Honor, there was just this one other informational item that I thought we ought to mention, particularly since, am I, am I correct in assuming this is the, the committee that Mr. Van Billiard served on, we honored earlier tonight, the Citizens Advisory, Community Development Advisory Committee? We have this informational item that there's a public hearing, public hearing later this week, Thursday night, December 9th, in the conference room here at City Hall, to, to get citizens' input into the use of CDBG monies. So, we just ought to make note of that for the press. Probably an important avenue for people to come forward with their wish lists for a substantial amount of money that the city receives each year, I believe. Yes, thank you.
And they'll be there, Ned.
Okay.
They always are. It's a full house. Any other miscellaneous or unfinished business? Very good. Somebody like to make the motion?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Harold said something?
Mayor, tomorrow is December 7th, looking at the City Council, probably John Heinz and the mayor. We knew exactly where we were 63 years ago. It should be a very solemn day. Probably Joan Grassel also.
Definitely.
Um, so keep that in mind. 63 years. Unbelievable. December 7th, 1941.
I know it. I know it. Uh, does someone want to make the motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. See you all on the 20th.